Alright everyone, before I call this meeting to order, I hope you please turn your cell phones down or off. And let's call the Spring Hill Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Today is Monday, June the 3rd, 2019. First item on my agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. All of us, everyone, if you can, please stand, remove your hats, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item that I have on my agenda this evening is the amendments to the board meeting from May 6th. Everyone read over them? If you have any changes. I have one clarification. The services for May 6th are for 2018 to 2019.
So, yes, it's for the previous fiscal year, so I know we're heading into fiscal year 1920, but the actual work for the audit will be 1819.
Anybody else have any items for the minutes? That I will entertain a motion to approve or not approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Minutes passed. The next item on my agenda is Ms. Leggett of 401 South Walnut Street requesting to address the board this evening.
Okay, I'm Mrs. Jane Leggett, my name is Peggy. This is my husband here and our neighbor John Bruce Stowe. And we are living at the corner of Walnut, South Walnut Street and Second Street. And I wanted to bring it to account some verification that we are having a problem with traffic over there. We've received a visit from the lieutenant, a senior here, this week, and some of the problems have maybe been taken care of because I see there's flashing speedometer light down the street from us and that's going to maybe take care of it. But there've been two serious accidents there since we moved in, in November. And we're concerned because there's some little children. Mr. Bruce Stowe has grandchildren on the corner, he lives across the street from us on the corner. He has grandchildren in the yard a lot, they're small. It seems like a lot of people want to avoid the two traffic lights in town and they turn at our street because zero to sixty on Second Street before they get up to the next street. That's a problem too, they're really speeding going that way. That has, I've been told, is called a spring hood bypass to go around those two lights, which is ridiculous to me. And we're just concerned that maybe something bad is going to happen there. Ms. Louise Saunders lives behind us and she told me that there had been a wreck there one year and there wasn't the talent to do that. And I've driven that way myself and I can see when you come across that little rise there, you can't necessarily see the cars coming into the intersection. And you have to be almost to the second or third house on the right before you can see into the intersection. So if you're going sixty miles an hour, like the last wreck we had there, the lady was going at least that fast. There's no way she could have stopped. She was niddly, dizzy or something and ran head-on into a car on the opposite lane. And had there not been a pole there, she would have ran into the house. So it's sort of a serious situation for us and we're really concerned about it. I know that 581 is a state highway. I don't know what the town's position is in getting a flashing light or traffic entering the intersection. But if there's anything that can be done, we would certainly appreciate it. Do you think they have?
Yeah, I'd ask them to go and say. I appreciate what you've already done, but when you're coming up Highway 581 from the bypass and you turn right on Walnut Street, you put a sign there that says, "No through trucks," that's fine, appreciate it. Well, there needs to be a thirty-five mile an hour sign, say a five hundred door, six hundred feet from there, going towards the Stop and Shop. There's nothing long there. If I come off 581 and turn right, there's nothing that tells me what the speed limit is, which most people know what it's supposed to be in the city limits anyhow, but, you know, it's nothing that. Would appreciate some help in that. And then as you go around on Second, I mean Walnut Street until you get to First Street, and you turn right there and go over Lewisburg Road and take a left, the sign in front of the cemetery is so old and dilapidated, you barely can see it in the daytime. At nighttime, you cannot see it, it's impossible to see. And then we'll get to the Stop and Shop and we're going to turn around and come back. Just as you get to the Stop and Shop, there's another sign that says, "No through trucks," that's fine. But there's no thirty-five mile an hour speed sign there either. In other words, you've got to go all the way across the tracks and about halfway down in front of the Heisen project or older folks homes, I'm an old person too, or what you want to call the place that has no sign whatsoever until you get there. It needs to be one just as you get to the train tracks. And at two thirty-five Walnut Street, there's a thirty-five mile an hour sign there. Nice, neat, no problem. The trees just need to be trimmed so you can see. And I appreciate it, that's the only thing I've got. Any help I can get, I'd appreciate it, and I know he would his children and grandchildren.
Do you mind if we've looked at reducing a lot of the, lowering the speed limit in a lot of areas?
Yes.
Down to much, down to even twenty, that's in a lot of areas.
Well, in that area, it would be an ideal place for twenty with your children.
I might just over, just.
When they come off 581 and turn right on Walnut Street, from Walnut Street to the next street, there's drag race, I mean on Second Street, there's drag race from there to the curb. I sit there all night and watch them coming and going, coming and going. I send the police department, they stop them, but they're not there all the time. They can't be there all the time because it's impossible for them to be there all the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, and after they had contacted the town, we'd sent Lieutenant Proctor out there to speak with the residents then. So again, it was suggested that we were going to put the speed monitoring device out there to slow and calm the traffic a little bit and to tell the patrol officers to review the area or patrol the area a little bit more frequently. So, but we'll look into the speed, possibly lowering the speed, speed limit there and additional possible signs.
Anybody else? I also have this evening, Ashley Winston, who should address the board.
The board, audience, this is Ms. Ashley Winston, she is the supervisor at Nash County Senior Center. We've got a lot of issues in the county, especially spiking dementia-related issues. And Ms. Winston is going to talk to you about some of those issues as far as the resources and what the resources are at the Nash County Senior Center.
Good evening. Like Chief Buck said, I'm Ashley Winston, I'm our Nash County Senior Services Supervisor. I work at the Senior Center in Nashville. Our Nash County Aging Plan focuses on three goals. Increasing accessibility of community-based services and support for older adults so they can remain independent and age in the community of their choice. Empower older adults and individuals with disabilities to participate in community events and strive for optimal health. Provide a safe environment for all older adults and individuals with disabilities. Through these goals, we have created a dementia task force. The reasoning why we've done this is because every sixty-five seconds, someone develops Alzheimer's or related dementia. It is also the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and the fifth leading cause of death in Nash County. Our dementia-friendly Nash County is part of the dementia-friendly America that raises awareness and understanding of dementia. The task force is of local agencies and organizations that were formed to positively impact and support our community caregivers and those living with dementia. I am pleased to announce that the Spring Hill Police Department has joined our task force. We meet every month and Chief Buckett has attended one of those meetings and through that, we have decided that we would like to plan more trainings to benefit not only the Spring Hill Police Department, but all of Nash County law enforcement. Chief Buckett and me will be working on developing and creating, basically, a training for Nash County law enforcement through Nash Community College. Oftentimes, we deal with caregivers that we come in contact with, maybe because someone has wandered off, maybe because someone has become hostile, and we're seeing that law enforcement and first responders don't often know how to deal with someone with dementia. As I'm sure somebody in this room probably is a caregiver, if not, you've been a caregiver in the past or you will become a caregiver. So we want to make sure that we're focusing on those caregivers and that they're able to have the people that they love remain independently in their homes. So we're happy to have Spring Hill Police Department as part of our task force. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, the next item we have on our agenda is a public hearing for zoning tax amendment regarding electronic gaming.
Do you want to go into the public hearing?
Do you want to go into public hearings?
I have a motion and a second to go into public hearings. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Notion passes. What we have this evening is a request to increase the number of machines from twenty to forty.
And in addition to the request to operate on Sunday hours as well too?
On Sunday hours, all set.
So we have our applicant here this evening, Mr. Steve Bachelor. If the board has any questions at some point during the public hearing process. Again, Mr. Bachelor came before the board several months ago. His limited experience in operating such business, after discussions with his partner, realized that basically they didn't request enough initially. So instead of the twenty, they stated that they should have requested the forty at that time. And so he went through the process to request a zoning tax amendment. And this is, this is what's for you, and you have a copy of the ordinance that we have, section twenty-six dash two forty, electronic gaming operation highlighted in red, is proposed changes.
Anybody this evening wish to, any input in this or an opinion?
I have a question. What's the difference between sweepstakes and electronic?
Gaming?
Gaming.
It's the same thing.
I thought we, I thought that was outlaw, sweepstake. No?
Might have used to be, it's not now.
Oh, it's not now?
No.
And I wanted to make note too also that there have not been any issues with any police calls or service calls to the, to the location. And I know that that had come up in discussions during the planning board meeting, if there were any problematic with, issues with the business. One of the other concerns that, that was discussed was the security. One of the functions was having an alert button to contact police if there were any issues. And so Mr. Bachelor and his, and his partner have already installed and turned on service for that as well.
Any citizens have any questions to the public hearing? You're more free to speak.
Well, I just thought it was illegal too, and I wondered, when did it become legal?
And so, there's been court cases that are contradicted, and so it's still up for debate. But for communities, we wanted to regulate it, that's, that's the purpose, to have it in our books or regulated. Where, if there was one in town, where you can have them. If you don't have any regulations on any of the uses there, then potentially you come into an issue where if someone were to come and apply for one, you couldn't, you would have to potentially approve that use. So instead of not having it completely discussed or in our books, it, it's better to have it in our ordinances so that we currently regulate it. So that's, and so if there is any issues with potential operations, we get some of that information and updates from the league of municipalities that lets communities know what you might need to change with your ordinance, but we have not gotten anything like that, so.
When we first looked at gaming operations, before there was any controversy, one of the questions we had to ask ourselves is what did the community want? How did they feel about it? And at that time, they weren't that popular. So we said ten would be reasonable number to get away with it without causing a stir. So now we've gone to twenty, now you want to go to four times the amount and open on Sunday. I think you need to be very careful. Especially since you're doing this in response to a request and not into a general discussion. Because remember that all gaming operations will have to follow or be able to follow the same rules. So you're doing a dramatic expansion of this. And you may, I'm not speaking against it, but you need to be aware of that and you need to think real hard about that, as to what the community will stand for.
Well, the Sunday then, just, we're talking about after church, two to ten on Sunday, you know, if you approve something. We're not talking about all day Sunday, just good afternoon. And mainly the forty instead of the twenties, because my partner said it's just the optimal number that works. And I'm trying to make use of my space. I've got a lot of space that's just not being used. And frankly, some of the older people, like the old-fashioned kind, it's got a button instead of the mouse. And I'm just trying to, you know, trying to make people happy. It's the same kind of gaming, but it's got buttons instead of the mouse. It's easier for the old people. I mean, that's, that's what they request, I'm just trying to, trying to fulfill the request of the people.
How many parking spaces are there?
It's parking for probably forty cars a morning. And if we go around the back, it's more than that.
You were close to a Sunday drive? You mean close to a Sunday drive?
Yeah, we were close, we were close this morning, this morning.
But what's the ordinance concerning, you have an ordinance concerning Sunday operations?
We have the ordinance concerning what now?
Operating on Sundays.
So, yeah, originally.
Originally, yeah.
Yeah, originally, it was only through Monday through Saturday.
It's all, any type of businesses like?
No, specifically this use.
But what about others? Originally?
Don't, I don't think we have any other.
Like it's, it's establishment by establishment, like there might be other regulations about no Sunday stuff for light bars and things like that. But we don't have any blanket, we're looking outside.
Okay, oh, that's amazing, okay.
Yeah, we don't, there's no blanket rule.
Anybody else in the public who wish to speak?
Do you have, do you have a lot of people waiting to get their machines through?
Well, it depends on what day it is, you know, usually the weekends. But the main thing with these other twenty is to use my space that I've got available because there's a lot of space I'm not using. And, you know, the space you're not using, you're wasting. And I'm going to get the ones that the, the people like just the button. That's what I'm going to put it, because they'll fit there. I can put them back to back, ten and ten, back to back. And, you know, they would go right in here, in this space right here. And, you know, the, the old people, they just like, they slap their foot instead of, that's what I'm asking.
So you'd say it's more, more for convenience than it would be to grow a business, is what you're trying to say?
Right, no, I don't think so, no. Really, it might attract some old customers.
If you're looking to the public, which is to address any other issues, you'd like to come out of public hearing, the board can address their questions and concerns and consider action. If I get a motion to come out of public hearing?
I'll make a motion, we come out of public hearing.
I have a motion and a second to come out of public hearing. We're back in open session. If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Nah.
All opposed say nay. We are back in open hearing.
Okay, so from the staff report, if you look on page two, under recommendations and suggested motions, again, you would go through each of the motions for, for a vote. And then read off the highlighted italicized red areas indicating why or how it is or is not consistent. And then also for motion two. Obviously, with motion three, the board could approve, decline, or ask for an amendment to what's being suggested, which has to be agreeable between the parties in town and the applicant.
I should always give the board a chance to discuss it among themselves to see if they wish to amend or make any changes or go with the tax amendment request. Any questions by you on the board or feelings about this?
I don't have any problems with it. Every time I've passed by there, it seems to be very orderly. And I've not heard any complaints or any problems. Yeah, as long as there, there continue to be no problems, I don't have any problem with it. But then if the problems, some problems occur, then we would have to rethink it.
I know you had a question about the Sunday operation?
Yeah. They tell me it's on a, like on a one-on-one type thing. Basically, it's no, it's no.
The blue laws?
No, 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 standard rule, cross the border for everybody.
I'm two o'clock.
On Sundays.
Have your requests in the end opened or closed this evening?
Well, some, a lot of it, just like, we don't serve alcohol anymore. A lot of folks, it's just like any place that people go, sometimes they're just going to go shoot the breeze, you know? If someone were to go Sunday evening, they ain't going on that. You know, they ain't all sitting there just playing all the time, you know? Right. I was drinking machine in there, we serve coffee, free coffee, and sometimes donuts, one of them.
Now, I tell you firsthand, I'm one of the ones, one of the, one of the original games that used to sit there tabletop. I used to enjoy going down there and playing the game. It was, it was a stress reliever. My personal, my personal, I mean personally, my personal concern and opinion is that Sunday is not the right time to be open, especially if there's the public debate and there's stuff going on about.
Well, you know, except y'all, and like I say.
Now, as far as the forty?
We're saying after, after two o'clock or something, from two to ten, two to nine, one of them. And if there's no Sunday, you know, we can live with one of them.
As far as increasing the number, increasing the business, I don't really have a problem with that. I just, I guess my, my life's a little different now, so I see things a little different.
I understand. And like I say, Sunday, you know, it ain't, it ain't no, it's up y'all.
You can live with the forty machines, with no Sunday.
Anyway, whatever y'all say to do, that's what I'm going to do. I'm married, I'm pretty good taking orders.
If there's debate on the legality of it or not, and, you know, Jay's point was, yeah, some people would know, you can tell, some people were concerned. It says, they barely, we're kind of deep in the Bible Bill, you know, I don't, I guess we're making, it makes me very personal. That's the right thing, but that's just for me personally.
To have been, I'm, I'm saying to you, we got, get them all.
I tend to agree. But the problem I see is we start down a slope for a slope. You know, either way, we got, who do we ban on Sunday, who do we don't ban on Sunday? I think we're starting down a slope that could come back and bite us. Granted, I'm old enough, I remember the blue laws. I remember when there was nothing open, hardly on Sundays. But those times unfortunately were wrong, but I think if we start, I think we need to set a limit, but then how do we set a limit? You know, if we say forty machines for Steve because he can accommodate them, the next one that opens up's got a building twice that size, but we've set forty machines. And they might put a one eighty in there. So, you know, this is one of those kind of difficult ones because we're sliding, we're going down a slope by, and I don't know what the correct answer's really going to be.
Well, Ricky, I could, my building would accommodate ages, but, you know, I'm with you too, you know, there's got to be a limit. And I'm just shooting for the limit and that's it. And y'all go to the phone and I'll be a winner, whoever behind me that hasn't been able to.
Well, and that's the point, is the next one.
He's got to live with it, because I got it.
We have to set a rule somewhere and everybody's going to have to go by it. But how do we ban certain things because it's on Sunday? I personally don't care for it on Sunday, but there's a lot of things I don't care for on Sunday.
Well, unlike you, I remember when nothing was open on Sunday.
Yeah, so.
It's at church, now you can.
We have to be careful who we say can operate on Sunday.
Right.
Do you have any square feet that are inside your garden?
Sixty-five, huh?
Anybody came back with another seven vehicles? You have to improve on the power from the main dreams they got.
You can say that.
And Rick, too, too.
Yeah, because it's not.
I can't have a home of twenty-six people, period. It's because you got to do about a count of them, it's also, and state, so it's got to be a limit.
You don't have the opportunity to look at it in terms of what size the building may be or apartment may be if somebody were coming in or another business, they had to come for us. The request having.
Is it special use or?
It's special use, though, any, any other individuals who wish to operate would have to come before the planning board and then through the board of commissioners with the final decision, yes.
Looking at parking arrangement, we could look at the size of the building and use those factors and evaluate another request separately from Steve's.
Right, yes.
Request or whatever he's granted, correct?
Yes.
As far as the number of machines.
Yes. Now, whatever changes you do to this would affect, would affect all individuals who are applying, but, but yes, any other individual who wished to be permitted with this would have to go through an S U P process.
So then if we change it this way, anybody who wanted forty or less would not have to get any kind of approval?
They would still have to get an S U P approval, but they, yes.
They can have up to forty.
They could have up to forty, any amount up to forty.
Provided they had the space.
Yes.
Well, they'd have to meet all the rest of it, one thousand feet from church, a hundred feet from residence, and in. Jake, wish. Have you, that's all, that's all?
Yes.
It almost seems like we need to vote on this before the other two.
Well, it's, it's, it's all combined, this whole request to do the, the tax amendment is a single request to change basically this. And so before you even go through the process of going through the motions, if you want to go ahead and decide to amend this, and let's say that you, instead of, you allow him to operate, well, you allowed any of these kind of operations to operate on Sunday, you could potentially change the hours. Instead of two to ten, you could stay two, two to six, two to seven, whatever arbitrary number that this board feels comfortable with, you can make that.
But do that, nay.
Well, yeah, you can, you can make the proposed changes to it now and see if Mr. Bachelor would have. and see if Mr. Batchel would agree to it. If he does, then basically we would amend this specific, this specific request to whatever changes are agreed upon, yes.
I'm good with the way it's written, other than my objections on the other. But again, like I said, we're going down, I think, a slippery slope. I'm personally good with the way it's written.
I don't mind it being open on Sunday. I just wonder if ten PM is a little late on a Sunday evening.
They used to close at nine, one of the bars, so you dropped after nine, you're like, what up? I'm just glad they didn't wipe all up.
But the bar open on Sundays? Your boss? What time do they open?
I would have a discussion with somebody who wants to make a motion.
I make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that this request is not inconsistent with conference plans that have been adopted by the town of Spring Hope. I don't know how I need to state it, but I agree with like it's written, except maybe change ten PM to nine PM.
Add that, add that into your statement. With the time change.
My motion is that zoning tax amendment oh four is not inconsistent with conference plans that have been adopted by the town of Spring Hope. Changing the hours of Sunday operation from two to nine PM. And increasing the number of machines to forty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion. A motion number one is not inconsistent with conference plans that have been adopted by the town of Spring Hope, but the number of machines can increase to forty and Sunday hours from two to nine PM. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. I'm gonna have to show a hand if I have voices in both ears. So I can get a correct count. With the people voting in favor of the motion, please raise your hands.
It's in favor, okay.
In favor. Commissioner Tucker, Commissioner Griffin. The people voting nay, please raise your hands. I have a nay carrying that vote. I will open this up to more discussion unless somebody would like to make a motion to leave it as stands.
Now, my nay was for that Sunday. I don't like the idea of being open on Sunday. The forty machines are fine. But the Sunday, I don't like that idea.
Commissioner Lucas?
Same here. Forty machines fine, not open on Sunday.
So I'll make a motion that twenty nineteen ZTA dash oh four is not inconsistent with conference plans that have been adopted by the town of Spring Hope with the change that there will be no Sunday operation, but we can increase to the number from twenty to forty machines.
I'll hold this vote for one second for discussion. As Mr. Batchel, if you only get the forty machines, do you wish to continue or do you wish to stop this process at this point?
That would be fine, be forty's fine. Sunday, Sunday, it's not, it's not a deal breaking up.
There's no more discussion. I have a motion, Commissioner Kane, to change it to forty machines, no Sunday operation. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Nay.
Once again, we're gonna do a show of hands. All in favor, please raise your hand. The forty machines, no Sunday hours. I have a count of three. Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Lucas, Commissioner Kane. Get some names down here. And with the nays, please raise their hand for me to confirm that. Commissioner Tucker, Commissioner Griffin. I have a split vote of three to two, allowing forty machines with no Sunday operation. I will go to second motion. Does none of you have to, does it not?
It does not have to mean that.
It's a majority vote. I think only in eighteen years I've actually raised our hands twice. So we did twice, now we've doubled it. The second motion is that twenty nineteen ZTA zero four is reasonable and in the public interest, or is not reasonable and in the public interest. Do I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion that twenty nineteen ZTA dash oh four is reasonable in public interest with the amendments mentioned before, no Sunday operation, and increasing from twenty to forty machines.
That's all right. That's it. It's reasonable in the public interest. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got to turn my head in reverse in the line. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. We're going to say it's a four to one.
Well, actually, too, I kind of romble. But you still got some majority.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume that that vote went along the same lines. And so that motion passes, it is reasonable in the public interest. So now we go to motion number three. The town of Spring Hope Board of Commissioners does or does not recommend the following amendments to the zoning ordinance. And just for clarification, this is increasing the number to forty and no Sunday operation. Do I have somebody that wishes to make this motion?
Make a motion not to recommend that Amendment Section twenty-six dash two forty.
Does recommend.
Does, does recommend, yeah. Correction, you don't recommend it, you approve it.
I'm just reading off the paper, the man who gave it. Do I have a second?
Second.
You're gonna get my head split from the start. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Nay.
Not only, I don't, I don't oppose, I'm not the opposition, it's that I thought Sunday was okay. I wanna be, I'm not opposed to the whole deal.
I am going to make notes on my sheet with the votes split on all three along the same lines. Special, is that cover all of that?
Yes, it does.
Correction? All right. You have forty machines. You have a paper forty machines.
Appreciate it. Okay, I think she's. Thank y'all.
So, next item I have on the agenda is concern action on the approval of water and tax write-offs. And I'm gonna turn our attention to the clerk, because she wants to judge the board. It's our meeting of the year. Let us have Michelle.
Okay, so, the water write-offs for.
Let's, let's see, okay.
For this year are three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-four cents. All avenues have been made to try to get these, these people skip town, and we do have one person that's deceased. The thing about this is it's been on the debt collections for three years. And if and when they try to come back to town, we will collect their money. And that does happen quite often. They come back and we do collect it. But for now, there isn't anything, I mean, it's been to the state, it's set on our computers for three years. So that's really what we're doing right now, is just trying to write it off the, off our books.
I'm gonna pass my question over to the lawyer. Years we've been doing this, so if we're writing this off, do we have the right if these people move back to town?
Yes, it is, it's more, writing off is more of an accounting.
It is.
Matter, it doesn't mean the debt goes away.
Well, how do you maintain it? I mean, once you write it off, do you take it off the computer?
It comes off of, like how Mark said, it comes off the accounting part. Like right now, my books don't, don't, they're not level, because there's three thousand dollars owed. But then, like, say this person right here comes back to town, and we put their name in the computer, and all their information comes up, and they'll take, oh, okay, well, she owes ninety-nine dollars. So, we'll get the money then, but right now, we just need to write this off so that our books can balance.
But it has, it has a legal effect on the debt.
And actually, the same thing goes with the tax write-offs, which is seven hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Just re-clarify, we write the debt off.
Right.
For purposes of balancing the books, but debt's still there.
This debt's still there.
If those people come back.
If they come back to town, yes, sir, and if somehow we take possession of their home, if we foreclose, this debt will still be there.
The normal rules would apply, I mean, there may be some debts that over a period of time, the statute of limitations means you can't pursue it. And so those rules are still out there, but I'm just saying that the actions you're taking tonight doesn't affect the debt.
Do I have a motion to approve the water and tax write-offs?
I'm making a motion to approve the water and tax write-offs as requested.
Second.
Commissioner Walker? I have a motion and a second to approve the water and tax write-offs. If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Next one I have is action to advertise outstanding twenty eighteen taxes. Back to you, Ms. Griffin.
Okay, this is just the ad that we're going to put in the paper. These are the people that have not paid their taxes that were due January first, and they've gotten several, several letters and notices. So the law says that we have to advertise, and that's what we're doing.
Is this current?
Yes, this is this year's, and this is according to North Carolina general statutes.
Do you have a total?
I do not. See where she has a total on there? No.
It's a lot.
Yes, a lot.
Do I have a motion to advertise the outstanding twenty eighteen taxes?
I make a motion that we advertise twenty eighteen outstanding taxes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to advertise twenty eighteen outstanding taxes. If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Next item I have on our agenda is the budget ordinance amendment twenty nineteen oh five.
Yeah, we're shifting funds from contract services to bill salaries in administration for the rest, for the end of the fiscal year.
Motion to accept the budget ordinance amendment twenty nineteen oh five?
Make a motion to accept budget ordinance amendment twenty nineteen oh five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept budget ordinance amendment twenty nineteen oh five. If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. That motion passes. The next item I have on my agenda is to review the budget draft for post fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. So, turn this over to the town man.
You have two sets of draft copies in front of you. One is the memo for the budget. The other is the actual annual budget ordinance for nineteen twenty. Again, both draft, draft copies. For the general fund expenditures, the total for the upcoming fiscal year is one million two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. For the water and sewer enterprise fund, the total amount budgeted is four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. You can see on the budget, annual budget ordinance, broken down in the line items, going from, for example, expenditures of governing body administration, buildings, public safety streets, power build sanitation, recreation, library, cemetery, and museum. And again, for the expenditures on the water and sewer fund, water sewer administration and finance fees, expenditures and water and sewer operations. Again, both the expenditures and revenues are balanced in the respective amounts that I've just stated. We are keeping the same tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year, which is sixty-seven cents per one hundred dollar valuation. Again, the total budget between the two is, I believe, one million seven hundred and one thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Some of the discussions that we have had over the last several months of this year have been in regards to potential raises for town employees. And so, again, after much discussion with, with our pay study scales, what's being proposed for the upcoming fiscal year is that for the, within the police department, all patrol officers are being proposed a five percent raise for the lieutenant's position, a set amount of fifteen hundred dollars. For the sergeant's position, a set amount of one thousand dollars. For the administration, we are looking at for the town clerk slash finance officer, ten percent. And for the tax collector, three percent. In addition, what's being also proposed is a two percent pull-up for all full-time employees.
You said town clerks.
Slash finance officer. The, the individual serves both roles. Both duties. Yes.
You said ten percent?
Yes. We, according to our pay study scales for a position that does both of those, the current salary was grossly under, underpaid, under-valued.
I understand.
Yes.
I want to know, is it being brought up to?
It's brought up to close to average. It's still not at the midpoint of, of an average for that position, but it's being brought up close to it, yes. Some of the high amounts of that position, the high scales that we've gotten in comparison, were around forty-two thousand dollars. Some of the averages that we have seen for those, those dual positions is roughly around thirty-seven, or thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars. is roughly around thirty-seven or thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars per year. So this would bring up that position just under thirty-seven thousand.
All right, I ask the next question now. Matt, right, Matt?
Yes.
She's not, she's not coming back, right?
No, she is, she is not coming back.
So, um, her salary? Was it not, uh, I didn't say equally or whatever, was not split at, uh, between?
No, her position for, for the customer service position was fully paid out of the water and sewer enterprise fund. Um, the town clerk and finance officer position is being fully funded out of the general fund, separate fund, yes.
You could not, um, give them what money taken out of water and sewer to that?
So with the water and sewer, and I, and a lot of this had been discussed in the past with Kevin Barnell, town engineer when he, when he was. Basically, we had been barely just covering making, um, breaking even in that account for our enterprise fund. That account technically is an account that the town should be operating as a business. So in the black, having some profits, setting that aside for future capital projects and plans. Now, currently, I'm filling that position right now for the customer service. We're splitting those duties between the town clerk and the tax collector. But the majority of those hours are being spent by the tax collector. Um, at some point, if we need to, uh, we may look at hiring a part-time position. But I have no intentions of bringing that position back as a full-time position. So, again, with the added cost yearly with maintenance and cost of infrastructure repairs, um, wanted to make sure that that water and sewer fund has adequate funding. And so, yes, it does relieve some pressure with that, with that full-time position being removed, um, from that, from that enterprise fund at this point.
You need till the end of this month to finish starting T and R.
Exactly, we want to make sure that we, uh, advertise for the public hearing. So, and, and typically, we have, um, budget amendments at the end of the, end of the fiscal year. So typically, the last week of June, um, town clerk, I mean, the finance officer may have, uh, budget amendments. So I'd like to potentially schedule it if the board wishes to go ahead and select a date that, um, we can meet at the last week of June to approve the, uh, said budget. And then during, during this time and, and the next time we meet, if there's any potential changes or suggestions or amendments to the budget that you all would like to request, um, I can look at that for the next several weeks.
I guess his question is, we got back to with the draft. You don't need a, you don't need a motion for that?
No, no, at this point, I, I, you know, if there's a certain request, you can either state it at this meeting or you could follow up with, uh, with an email or contact me later if there's something else that comes about that you all want to discuss or, or talk about. Uh, but at this point, no motion, just really kind of an agreement or suggestion on a specific time and date for the last week of June to meet.
Commissioner Tucker, you've, uh, been vocal this year about raises for patrol officers. Does it seem like an appropriate amount or at least a step in the right direction?
I think it's a step in the right direction. I think if we ask Jay or the chief, I think their salary is still gonna be lower than some of the other agencies. So I think it's a step in the right direction for all of the employees. I'm not real big on these studies. Been with the state for sixteen years and every time we turn around, we're doing a study. And we still haven't seen anything from the study. So I would just prefer we did our own thing based on what spring hook is and what spring hook can do. But I think it's a step in the right direction. And next year, I'd like to see if we could possibly bump it a little more for everybody.
We just handled another two grand, uh, there.
All right, well, if everyone seems good with these numbers, any recommendations for Jay? Commissioner Lucas, she's even hesitant. I'm not gonna move on, I'm sure you're happy.
I'm okay, I just feel like, um, for, for all, all of the person, all of them, that if you have, um, good employees, that, um, with all, within all, all we can, we need to, um, compensate them.
And you cut those down to two percent on top of all of this too, right?
The quota.
The two percent cost of living adjustment.
Yeah, okay, I am definitely, okay.
Three or two?
Two percent quota, two percent.
And you want to keep them. That's my thing.
It costs, it's costs communities and towns more money if you have, uh, a lot of turnover.
That's right. That was, that was, that's my concern, okay?
Before I move on to the next item?
Do we want to go ahead and set a potential date for the last week of June?
Yeah, sometime in July. Anybody have a suggested date for June, end of June?
Last Monday.
Twenty-four.
That's what we're doing now.
It's the twenty-fourth.
Yeah. The twenty-fourth looks like a good date for everyone? For everyone on the board? Twenty-fifth a good date for everyone? He's, he's, let me, I, we, maybe you can do Tuesday night. Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Tucker?
Yep.
Well, I'll keep y'all to this, that we will, at the end of this meeting, recess to June twenty-fifth.
I can guarantee anything earlier than seven.
Commissioner Walker, you came tonight at seven o'clock?
Don't pay me any attention.
If I wouldn't have, we'd have had a two-to-two split all night and I'd have been making all the decisions.
I'm okay, seven o'clock.
All right, I'll go, come bring that up at the very end of the meeting. And I will move on to our next agenda item. Mr. Barbie, do you have chamber of commerce updates for us this evening?
Yes, just like to let you know that the, um, license plate agency is coming along. We were impressed with our first numbers out of the, uh, agency. We opened the last six days of the month of April. We're waiting to get our end of the month reports for May. I just left a, um, pumpkin festival pageant meeting. They had seven people over there, uh, looking at that. Can't emphasize enough, last year, they really had to struggle to get the five contestants that they had. That is like the minimum number that they want to have in order to have a pageant. So if y'all know of anybody, uh, little miss, I believe it's, um, five and six years old. And the, um, Miss Pumpkin Queen is anybody that's of age of, um, in high school age, between ninth and twelfth grades. They are expanding their territory a little bit, um, maybe help try to recruit some more people. Uh, before, it was just if you lived in the Southern Nash School District or attended Southern Nash High School. They're now opening it up to if you also have a spring hook address. We have heard some people that had expressed an interest in the past from Lake Royale that have a spring hook address, mailing address. So they are gonna be opening it up to that, but I did want to let you know that. Also too, I always want to make the council welcome to, we, uh, we have a business after-hours event at Edwards Crane this month on June the seventeenth. And I would like to invite y'all all to that. That will be at six P M. on Monday, June the seventeenth. And I believe that's all I've got for the evening.
How many contestants do you have signed up for the?
Uh, they, I don't believe they have any signed up yet because they were still trying to hash out all of that. You know, make sure they've got the, the school lined up and, uh, for the location. Apparently, they've had some, uh, the schools have started to tighten down on having events like that. In a migratory, yeah. So they're a little bit more difficult than they used to be in the past.
Are there any questions for Mr. Barbie this evening?
We do try to make it to that June seventeenth, um, function. Thank you. Six o'clock.
Next item on my agenda is report from the attorney.
Do I have anything to report to the board tonight?
Uh, and Barley?
The monthly activity report for May twenty nineteen, uh, there's files under section one activities. Nothing significant to report at this time, but under town issues, there are two. Uh, from communication with Paul, um, at PDG, National Power needs to be scheduled to come out and fix the communication problems between generator one and generator two and their respective automatic transfer switches. Both the fixtures for the lighting replacement project were installed by PDG on May twenty-eighth. And moving into issue two, uh, once the proper operation between the ATS and generator two is established, reestablished rather, PDG can make a proposal and have the set, uh, to properly rewire the lower patrols with additional switches and patrols to meet these requirements. Under work order summary, a, uh, total of a hundred and twenty-six work orders were completed in May. We had one, uh, read eight hundred and fifty-eight meters. There were eighty-nine re-reads. There were ten meter turnovers, seven meter turnovers. Four check for water leads, four yardage pickups, two trash recycled bin deliveries, three sewer service line backup calls, uh, one storm drain cleaning, one lift station alarm response. And there were four miscellaneous, uh, flag decoration-related pickup animals miscellaneous work orders performed. Uh, under other activities, uh, leaves and then pickup, um, for the month of June. It's gonna be on the fifth, sixth, nineteenth and twentieth. Uh, under operations for water, um, seven hundred and eighty-two gallons generated, eight hundred and fifty-eight meters read, eighty-nine meter re-reads, fifteen shut-offs and, uh, ten turnovers. Water sold, uh, during the billing cycle, um, current month was at two point six nine billion gallons. The previous was two point three four. And the year-to-date is twenty-nine point one billion gallons. Um, and flushing gallons leaks or non-bill use amounted to sixty-nine thousand gallons. Water produced from your wells during the billing cycle, uh, for the current month was three point three eight billion gallons. The previous was three point zero nine. And the year-to-date total is thirty-seven point three seven million gallons. Uh, for your wastewater, um, the flow that was metered at your plant, current month, three point one five million gallons, previous five point seven million. And year-to-date, sixty point four five million gallons. And also, uh, there was five point six inches of rain the past month. I tried to be brief, but are there any, any other questions, uh, that may deal with that?
I'm gonna let the board go first, I got five.
Get five.
Get five, so I'll, I'll let you build up.
Do you mind the board, any questions? All right, we'll get to schedule tomorrow. Um, I talked to Paul about the generators and the, uh, blowers.
If you can check, I'm not gonna ask you these answers off the top of your head. Approximately how many hours a day should they run?
And I'm guessing, are they all blowing in the same tank? Are there three tanks?
They are, that's not really my area of expertise, is.
I'll give you a chance to find some information.
You wanna know approximately how many hours they should be running?
Well, and Anthony, he, we talked, he's, he's, it's gonna take some time to figure it out. How many hours they should run, a couple of hours or whatever?
I know Paul said something about he's having to run continuously.
Well, that, well, after we, we get that answer. So Paul and I talked about finding somewhere Anthony could adjust them to get it set right. I don't know if they're blowing more than one tank, all the blowers are in the same tank.
I don't know, there's something I could find out.
So right now, for y'all's information, especially the shells, the blowers are running twenty-four hours a day.
Okay.
Seven days a week, which is probably generating a really nice power bill. It's obviously gonna shorten the life on those motors that they're not getting any chance to rest. They are running at full capacity twenty-four seven. So we're probably airing and breaking down the sludge to environment, virulence to life. But there's probably no sludge to be hauled out anymore because we're breaking it all down to a point. There's a fine line that Anthony will have to work with the engineers and, and just time to get it worked. Breaking, but I mean, these are real large motors, real expensive motors. And I know Paul talked to me about the generator controls too, that transfer switches aren't working. And if, um, the people they've got can't seem to come up with an answer. Bidding electric out of Durham is, is certified and qualified with most, all the manufacturers. They do a lot of generator work, but they're running them in two or three different locations. Bidding, B-I-T-T-I-N-G. Should be, Google, very easy to find. And they'll be a lot cheaper than your manufacturers will, comments are very cool. Are we up to date with the generators being serviced as Ferguson's taking care of that?
Yes.
They are probably serviced, yeah. For your next one? On the sewer line backups, do we know if those houses had clean outs or?
Um, it's, to, to my knowledge, they don't do it.
Okay. Cause I know in years past, we've offered to pay part of that fee to get them in. And that way y'all won't have to work from the street back. If it's, you know, customers are abusing it, then, yeah. But if it's on our end, it's on our end. And the one that surprised me was well production was only three point three eight. And wastewater was only three point one five. So by a miracle of something, I N I doesn't even come into play. We produced more water than went through the wastewater treatment plant, which is to be expected with watering yards and washing cars. But last month was three point oh nine. But last month was 3.09 million gallons we pumped out and 5.8 million gallons went through the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, sir.
So that, that number's.
Yeah, that's really, that's really great, it's on those numbers.
Yeah, there's, there's no INI with 5.6 inches of rain.
I will double check those figures rather.
I, yeah. I hope you don't come that way. It should have been five instead of three, but it wouldn't surprise me because that's how the numbers typically run. You do?
I know there was some issue that Sandy and I were trying to look out as far as well production. And I actually went around to all the wells this morning trying to work this issue out because it was showing the well production was way, way over what it should have been. And we found out there was a, there was an extra digit in one of these well reads, they put it way over. There may have been some miscalculation, remiscalculation. So, but we will double check those figures to make sure that they're an accurate reflection of what they should be.
And for those that have been on the email trail about the wastewater treatment capacity, by the numbers we got this month, um, our treatment plant is good for about 400,000 gallons a day. And we're coming in about 113,000, so if we give Bojangles and some of the millions, we've got water and sewer capacity. What about water capacity, you might look at that. It says it's on my wish list, bring it up in the middle of the well. Um, but wastewater treatment plant is looking much better now. Thank you. Any special question, Mark?
I'll give you one more shot. I'll try and give you four or five questions in the evening, but only once or twice a year.
That's all right.
Okay.
But I was heading one a little early, usually I would normally stay through the whole meeting, but I got a payment emergency, I've got everything too. Y'all have.
Next item on my attendance, report for the police chief.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Um, this month we had a few calls for service, y'all had them in front of you, we had an injury in the property report on May the 3rd. Dirt patrol that was found, that a window was broken out, entry, contact was made with the responsible party, nothing was taken from the building, which used to storage. Um, there was a shoplifting, Officer Watney responded on 5-4, Destiny Vick of Bailey stole some shoes and a phone. They were recovered, she's written citations. Um, on May the 6th, Officer Rafferty initiated a traffic stop and he performed a probable call search of the vehicle, located a small amount of marijuana in the front passenger area. Officer Wilson assisted on the stop and during the investigation it was revealed, and the opinion was formed that Shetwan Johnson of M-City was driving while in Paris, she was arrested for DWI of the container and marijuana. On May the 7th, um, on South Wollinah Street, Officer Rafferty initiated a traffic stop for speeding. Upon approaching the vehicle, there was an odor of marijuana from the vehicle, probable call search was conducted and a small amount of marijuana was found on the floorboard. Ricky Scarborough of Wilson also stated to Officer Rafferty that he had marijuana in his possession. On this person, he was arrested for those charges, marijuana speeding, exceeding the posted speed limit. Um, one of five roadside streets, roadside apartments, Officer Glasgow was called 911 and reported that she had been beaten by her boyfriend. When officers got there, they determined that she was intoxicated, no assault actually occurred, and she was arrested for misuse of the 911 system. Breaking and entering felony larceny, 212 on Clean Street, Officer Bill responded to report of breaking and entering. This is a vacant residence, entry was gained through the attic, could not be seen by the officers on routine patrol. Once inside, it determined that the offender stole three aerial photographs from the residence. Late prints were attempted, but there were none on the scene. May the 18th at 309 Third Street, while on routine patrol, Officer Watney found a vehicle parked in front of 309 Third Street. This is a vacant residence. Investigation revealed that two motorcycles parked beside the car belonged to two juveniles that were there and they were in and out of the car. Officer Watney found a small amount of marijuana in the car, issued one of the juveniles a citation for the marijuana. Both juveniles were returned to their parents. On May the 20th at the Spring Hope Community Park, Officer Rafferty was on patrol and investigated a suspicious vehicle. Canine Jacks was deployed to perform, perform a probable call search. Canine Jacks indicated on the odor of narcotics and 10 grams of marijuana was found. Andrew Blackley of Raleigh was arrested and transported to the Nashville County Jail. May the 24th, careless and reckless in possession of drug paraphernalia was found and Officer Wilson observed Javon McLaston of Spring Hope leave the L and L Park lot in a reckless manner. Finally, on May the 25th, law and patrol officer Wilson observed a vehicle speeding on South Wollinah Street. Traffic stop was initiated in a probable call search that conducted the vehicle based upon the odor of marijuana. Small amount of marijuana was located as well as a concealed nine millimeter handgun. Carlos Hernandez of Wilson was arrested for carrying that concealed weapon and the marijuana. Um, this month on the campaign results, you see, we've had 17 different charges, three checkpoints, four violations of drugs and 25 speeding violations. Uh, in the training, and this is also a special accomplishment of Officer Rafferty. Officer Rafferty attended the North Carolina Police Dog Association certification this month. This was held in Greenville, North Carolina. During the certification, the team, both the dog and the handler compete and certify on those areas that the dog can perform. These areas, of course, for patrol dog obedience, search of drugs in a building, handling calls, tracking, building search, area search, evidence and article search and apprehension. Officer Rafferty and Canine Jacks have only been together for possibly seven months. When he went to this training, this is a, it's a rigorous program, it's a rigorous certification, even for experienced handlers. You get butterflies in your little tummy there and you get nervous. Uh, he performed well, Jack performed well, and we're very proud of him for receiving that certification. And finally, as Ms. Wednesday was speaking about dementia, as I've said, this is, this is an ongoing problem here in Nash County. Um, it's been on the rise here over the last probably six months. And Ms. Mills has got, Jan Mills has got to send you lunch in tomorrow, no, Wednesday at the community center at 12 o'clock. Um, I would be there along with Ms. Marla Matthews from Amitys out of Franklinton, North Carolina. They're also dealing with dementia and dealing with caretakers. So anybody who you know may be interested in coming, have them come to the community center on Wednesday at 12. And Ms. Matthews will have a lot of information that caretakers may not be familiar with. And there are resources out there that are available that many people do not know. But it is an issue and it is something that needs to be addressed.
Anybody have any questions for the chief this evening?
Yes, sir, one question. Any amount of marijuana that you have on you is against law?
I see you have an awful lot of.
Yes, ma'am.
Small amount of marijuana.
As of this time, marijuana is not legal in North Carolina. Hemp is, and hemp has the CBD oil, but it does not have the THC, which is the drug in marijuana. But marijuana is not legal in North Carolina.
What is the penalty, a fine or citation amount?
Uh, it depends, misdemeanor, most of the time, you know, it's the cost of court plus the fine, and the fines change. But if it's a misdemeanor, they're often issued a citation, depending on circumstances and total appearance.
It just doesn't seem to be, it seems to have it every month.
Well, unfortunately, in society, it's more commonly accepted by the younger generation. Personally and professionally, I think, there's a lot of states that have passed an illegalization of marijuana for medical purposes. But the marijuana, the THC in the marijuana does nothing for the medical purposes, the CBD oil, it doesn't.
All right, just these, one off yours, the first one's Elm City, came from Elm City, came from Wilson, came from Garner, came from Raleigh. I know you're not getting large amounts, there's no one came from Wilson. We just need to see the other towns and see, we have a similar?
Yes, sir, it's similar across the state.
Anybody else have any questions, chief? Thank you. Mark, can I be with you? I don't remember you saying anything. Next item would be the manager's report.
So first item I have listed is the community meeting that was held on Thursday, May 30th at 5:30 PM. And it was regards to revitalization efforts. Cardo Engineering, who are consultants on the EPA Ground Fields Grant Program, helped us conduct the meeting for business owners, business residents and property owners. And so we gave a brief update on the three programs that are currently going on. The, again, the EPA Ground Fields Assessment Grant, North Carolina Small Town Main Street Program through our Downtown Development Board. And also the land use plan update that we are being assisted with the Upper Coastal Plains COF Council of Governments. And during the, the program, I, there was a, a lot of discussion at, discussions at one point in regards to blighted properties, residential and commercial. And so we know that in our neighboring community in Bailey, they acquired a part-time code enforcement officer to initiate some of those concerns regarding those violations. Now, with my budget for this year for downtown development typically has been $5,000 each year. But for this upcoming budget, I have raised it to $17,000. Now, there's several projects and things that we could consider doing with that line item. One is potentially hiring a part-time code enforcement officer if we wish to pursue that avenue. The other was to consider taking down some buildings. I know that we had this, had that discussion before in our budget meeting at the beginning of this year with the board. And also potential streetscapes, projects or things to do to beautify our downtown. So with that extra funding, I made sure that we had revenues to expand on certain types of things that we'd like to accomplish in regards to those issues that were brought up at that meeting. In addition, through working with our engineers, our, our contractors through the program, we can also look at the assistance that they were, they can provide and potentially beefing up our ordinances and penalties and such if we want to enforce. And it seemed like there was a consensus among a lot of the folks who were in town. And many of those members are active members on, on certain boards that we have through the community as well as the Chamber of Commerce as well. And so they'll, they'll be coming back. We may have another community meeting several months down the road. But we are going to actively work on, on reviewing some of those ordinances and making some necessary changes to enforce some of those problematic properties. Um, next item was.
You go right there.
Right, okay, sorry.
Um, where are we gonna plan to get this bench from? You're talking about the bishop. But this is a part-time employee?
So for the, so if we were looking on average for a part-time employee with the amount that they typically are paid, it could be around $10,000, that would be potentially a part-time employee. Um, so that's why I raised it to $17,000 so that if we decide to look at that, we would have the funding for that. Obviously, we had some increases in our property taxes as well as potential future increases with the distribution of the sales taxes from the state. So we did have some extra funding and that's where I had available room for the potential raises for the town employees, but also looking at that line item for downtown development and raising it from $5,000 to $17,000.
One other thing I might be able to say something is, remember the gentleman said that that could be subsidized by fines that the part-time person would institute. So it wouldn't be something completely paid, you know.
Partially, it could be.
That would be partially subsidized by the fines that this person would be instituting. That, of course, the fines that would be set by the town.
I made changes to some of the line items to the budget.
What's wrong with you two? You started, you, the, the line you started with, what's wrong with you in four feet? Where's the highest going to get you now?
So, so it was discussed with the, the consultants that, you know, there's different ways of enforcement. You know, and he discussed about the capital E versus the little e kind of thing. If the town wants to, if we don't have the ordinances strong enough to, to go after potential property owners, then we might have to beef up our, our ordinances. That's what they had discussed at that meeting, yes. And so, um, again, you know, with the potential attorneys that they would use as a subcontractor through the grant, they're, they're specifically land use attorneys who, who are experienced with some of those types of ordinances and regulations. So through the grant, again, it would be paid through the grant program that we have with the EPA grant, taking assistance with that.
I'm not taking Ms. Lucas's thunder, but I think what she's asking is, why do we have to hire someone to enforce the ordinances on the books? It would seem like the town manager ought to have the authority and the time to see if somebody's not following the ordinances or needs to be cited or not. I think that's your question, is why do we have to hire somebody? Is that above your scope of?
No, it's not, it's just, it was the time management concern or issues that was discussed. So again, um, their code enforcement officer drives around part-time during the week to find these violations and meet with the property owners and, and discuss with them or write letters about the issues and what needs to be addressed. And so my discussions with the consultants at, at some point I've had in the past was my limited time on being able to do all of those additional tasks. Um, with my time being split with working with all the different boards and projects that we've got going on. So even when it comes to at this point grass violations, typically at times when the police department has time, they will note some addresses on, on those properties that are taller than 12 inches. Then they will contact and, and let, let the staff know so that we can send out violation letters. I don't personally go out and drive around town to find these violations. Again, most of these violations are, are typically reported.
Before any decisions made, has it come back this board right?
Oh, yeah, I think this is gonna come up in the budget thing too.
Well, I mean, yes, so again, I had the.
I'll discuss further being, okay? Maybe you'll know when it's not.
We've got hours still.
I just think too that a lot of things are being repetitious, but, all right.
Um, next item is the Spring Hope Park. Again, town and county officials met with potential contractors to take down the existing equipment. Um, we're following up with, again, probably the, the lowest price that had come in for, for removal of the equipment. And we have another date scheduled to follow up on timelines, costs. And the county would be reporting back to me on potential cost of installation and shipping costs for the equipment. And from the feedback that I had gotten from the board, we looked at two separate playground, playground equipments and they were roughly similar priced. Um, the different models of playground equipment we had looked at were ranged anywhere from $27,000 up to $66,000. And the two that we were looking at were closer to around between 30 to $33,000. So I'll follow back up with the board next month on, on, on some additional information on costs with that.
Is there not a possibility of repairing some of the equipment that's there?
Yeah, no, from, from our discussions and meetings with part of the folks that were here and also with the county who were responsible for maintaining the equipment, they did not state that they could repair no longer the equipment to keep it in, in safe conditions for, for public use.
I don't know, probably it is, but I mean it's.
What year it was to do that?
It's curious, I was before you.
It was good shape when we put it in.
Well, it's all blue, I mean, it could, boards can be replaced, things can be fixed. Before you, you know, you face somebody three, four. Before you, you know, you're basically my three, four, five thousand dollars to tear it down and spend thirty-five thousand dollars more to buy more.
The lowest cost for the removal at this point has been fifteen hundred dollars.
Well, even fifteen hundred, and your lowest replacement at twenty-seven, that gets you anything under twenty-eight thousand dollars to repair what we've got, was the savings.
I bet on that, I look that on myself, a lot of it is irreparable. I mean, some of the, some of the faultiness, like the chain and the boat thing that goes back and forth in the operation, that whole mechanism, there's a lot of things which, if you take that part of the boat out, you basically ruin the entire piece of equipment, it's useless, it's just a frame, right? There were some other safety things that were, yeah, there are some boards that could be replaced, but a lot of it was, I have a faulty for the whole, the whole unit. I mean, you basically have to replace it, or rebuild the unit itself. I would welcome anybody to go out there and look at it, I mean, I do. So, that's my feeling, a lot of the parents that are out there with their children. And I think my grandchildren out there, and you just, you try to keep away from certain pieces of equipment, because it does not look safe. And yes, we put it in, I think it was twenty-eleven, does that sound about right?
I guess.
But I think it probably been in place where it was before that for quite some time. We got it on a deal, I think it was donated probably, and there was an allowance put in, and then it bought him out.
Relocating and reinstalling.
Yeah, and it bought him out, and he did a lot of work himself. But, I mean, like you said, it's wood, and it has, it has decayed.
Like a tectonic thing. You got all that in your budget?
Well, we've had discussions with potential fundraising. There is a subcommittee possibly through the Chamber of Commerce with Friends of the Park being discussed. So, we are also discussing with the, the county officials about a mutual agreement. And one has been drafted, but has not been sent to the county manager yet for review. So, it's a discussion where if we have this timeline of removal, the county would potentially move ahead to purchase that equipment, and then allow the town to reimburse the county over a period of years, interest-free.
How they repair it with that?
Yes. So, again, all of that is dependent on potential costs of the equipment. We don't have all of those hard numbers down yet at this point, so.
Alright, for other business, I'll start with my right, with Mr. Tucker this evening. Mr. Kane? Do you want to ask him?
Mr. and Mr. Edwards, you're here for a reason, I see. I feel like, I said, mister and mister. We don't want to slight you, so if you got something, you can. What you want to address? Okay.
Can we just say one word?
Yes, sir.
I look over here for the ride, see, who is this guy? Hey Glenn, how's it doing? He has a history with this town, a lot of history. And, and he's in the lion's cub in Nashville now, do you believe that? But anyway, thank you for, I, I enjoyed watching each person. Her, I think I met her one time a few years ago in that biggest house in Spring Hill. And I know how, how her sisters ended up here. And this lady's opposite of her knows even better than that. And this guy here's a lucky fellow, could buy the house that he bought, that when I went to graduate school in Chapel Hill, fifteen thousand, how about that?
He don't even have a hold on that, he...
I had heard it before. Used to be a candidate, candidate fire ground, that I should've bought that and that house instead of moving to going to Chapel Hill to graduate school. When Jack Kennedy got shot in nineteen fifty-three, in sixty-three, then Edwards was in Chapel Hill, where I shouldn't have been probably, so, so I found out. So, thank you for just, just listening, I'm, I'm watching every speech person. You got a tough job, but this old guy right here is watching every move you make.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Luke? Mr. Walker? Well, I spoke my piece with Enviro earlier. So, if I can get a motion to, to reset...
To reset us until...
To June twenty-fifth at seven P M.
Second, second.
I have a motion and multiple seconds. No more discussion, all in favor say ahh, we are reset.